Okay, I call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District. It is Thursday, March 28th, and the time is 5:07 PM. We will have a roll call starting from my far right.
Jan Michael Greenberg.
Barbara Perleberg, sorry.
Allison Beckham.
And Patty Beckman. Sandy Kravitz is en route, but we do have a quorum. Please stand. Board member Beckman or Beckham?
Will you leave us in the play?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Board member Greenberg makes the motion. Do I have a second? I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Agenda is approved, and board member Kravitz has arrived. We will move straight into our first action item, 4A. Approve revisions to governing board policies, KHB, advertising in schools, IMG, animals in schools, deletion of policy EEAFB, school bus advertising and its corresponding regulation, EEAFB dash R. Is there any discussion on action item 4A? Board member Greenberg.
I would like to look at policy KHB. And I've asked, I think, a number of questions, probably much too everyone's annoyance. My understanding, based on the plain language, is that this is a policy regarding our sale of advertising as a district, whether it's on buses, or it's on fences, or what have you. And we have two other policies, policy KH-A, public solicitations in schools, and policy KH-C, distribution and posting of promotional materials in schools. And so when I look at Title 15, and Section 342, Paragraph 27, and I'm just kind of reflecting on it, that this is about the sale of advertising in schools. I am not sure I understand what the opening two paragraphs have to do, and how they relate to advertising in schools, or really what they even mean. Because it reads currently, and it's read since 2011, and this isn't new, I appreciate that, but it reads, "No materials from outside of the school system used for propaganda purposes, defined as ideas, facts, or allegations, spread deliberately to further a cause or to damage an opposing cause." I'm not quite sure I understand, I mean, propaganda is not used in Title 15, it's not used in anything, as far as I'm aware, anywhere in statute. So I don't understand where this comes from, or where it's originating from, what it's trying to target.
Thank you for the question, and thank you for sending me your notes ahead of time. I did do a little research to see how far back I've got information about what's happened with this policy, and you're correct that we really don't have any information about what happened prior to about 2011 with this policy. You asked me about a particular case against the district that was reported in the Ninth Circuit around 2002, 2003. Just for everyone's information, this district did not have an in-house counsel until 2004, and that wasn't me. But I didn't have anything in my files that showed what happened out of that case. That was a case where this district was sued for denying a flyer that a company, or that a church submitted for a church camp. And it's my understanding that because of our mistake in turning, in declining to distribute that flyer, which was deemed to be viewpoint discrimination by the district, that it was that case that caused the legal department to be the one to look at flyers. This advertising policy is not intended to be about flyers, and you pointed out, we do have two other policies, and it's KH-C that really is supposed to deal with flyers. So I don't have any information about why that language is in there regarding propaganda and having that definition. I certainly can imagine that somebody wanting to advertise, pay the district money to advertise something, could conceivably have an advertisement that also contains what would be considered propaganda. But I really am just guessing at why the language is there. I know in your notes, you mentioned that you saw three other districts that use the same language, but that ASBO was saying they didn't, it wasn't their language, so I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think there was, until I read through all of our policies, there was confusion there, because I had solicited ASBO for its, you know, since they issue out policy, what they were thinking. And what was raised to me, just on a gut, immediate first reaction, is maybe this is in relation to Hill's. And I looked into that, and as I said, I'm not, I wasn't quite sure of the relationship, and we do have policy KH-C. And those peer schools, I looked at the Arizona Auditor General's report to choose what those peer schools are, but Chandler has it, Peoria has it, and Phoenix Unified High School District has it. But beyond that, none of the other, there are 10 of us in the peer schools, none of us have it. And, you know, I understand, in a sense, my concern with the language is, it is very broad and vague, and I don't really understand how it relates to advertising, because the second paragraph says, "School-sponsored student government activities in mock elections are exempt, along with promotions," but promotions we have in KH-C. But student government activities in mock elections, I would generally assume, would be exempt anyways, because they're within the scope, in their part and parcel, you know, of the educational environment. So I'm not exactly sure why we're exempting something that, in my view, if I'm reading this, would be exempt outright. And because we have, as things that we prohibit anyways, political advertisements or religious advertisements, I just don't see the need for this type of language, because it is quite loaded language. And I don't know, for example, especially in this day and age, if the World Health Organization came to us and said, "We want to put advertising, you know, trying to remind people to get vaccines," whether we're going to get hit with, "Well, that's propaganda." You know, I don't, I just don't know what that means, since it does include, for example, facts. It's a little, it's just a little, I am not personally comfortable approving this language myself, based on, based on that paragraph still being in there. And I appreciate, again, it seems to be very old language, it's not something that's been added in now.
Yeah, admittedly, it is not language that we looked at at all when we looked at revising it. It was already there, it wasn't, didn't stand out as problematic, and so, you know.
I don't know if my colleagues.
Other discussion of that, yes.
Board member Beckham?
Thank you for bringing it up. I have a, is, I've seen advertisements, outside advertisements, at our schools in banner form, outside on our fences. So are we saying with this language that that is not in compliance with our policy?
No.
Okay, then I, because that's how I read that. I thought, oh, now all these companies that come to us and do fundraisers, or just want us to, so we may need to, I think, possibly look at that language and see, what does it really mean for the district, and then put it in what it means.
So again, there's this other policy regarding flyers, and the last time that we looked...
Is that banner a flyer, though?
Well, the last time we looked at that policy, don't quote me on the last time we looked at it, but one of the times that we looked at it, we had Dr. Catalani as our superintendent, and he asked if we could give principals a little bit more freedom to approve the things that are posted at their schools, working with their parent organizations. And that is something that we kind of loosened up when we looked at that policy at that time, and banners were part of that. So banners never come to me unless somebody sees one and says, "I don't think that we should have that up on our school." And I will look at it and, and talk about whether there's any violation, you know, does it talk about alcohol, does it, you know, things like that. But otherwise, that's in the principal's hands to approve.
So if I have this correct, what, you're objecting to the inclusion of propaganda in an advertising policy, that there may be, it allows advertising that is not advocating for a particular cause, that may be political or not, or advocating against a certain cause. So drawing the distinction between advertising a product, as opposed to advocating for a belief or a political cause. I can see where some product advertisements might contain some propaganda, but if something is clearly only propaganda, then it's not allowed. If something is clearly just advertising a product, that people can buy that space and advertise on a banner, is that...
Well, I, I mean, I, if, I mean, if that is how you're reading it, I mean, in part, one of my concerns was, as I mentioned, the second paragraph then specifies, "School-sponsored student government activities in mock elections." So those are, those tend to be things that students do in the school area, and they create banners, whether it's for a prom, or, you know, whatever that form of advertising might be. And so my point to Michelle is, well, if we're, if we're specifically going into that zone with this, does that mean that, you know, that teachers, that we have to assess every teacher who hangs up a poster, you know, is a National Geographic poster concerning climate change? I mean, I'm just saying that, and that the realities of the political climate that we are in, right, I think there are more than a few of us who have been accused of being communists in the past year. I'm just saying that, you know, I think that type of language is very loaded, and doesn't, if it's specific to the advertising, the sale of goods or services, or the promotion thereof, I think that these bullet points that prohibit political advertising or religious advertising, I mean, maybe it should be included, something a bit more straightforward should be included in those bullet points, for reasons why we decline, that rather than the opening, the opening statement is, "No propaganda." But again, I find, I mean, people call everything propaganda. I mean, I just don't know how much of a hassle do we want people saying, constantly citing us, and I don't, I don't know if this is even a problem.
It hasn't been.
I don't do. But I don't know if people come in and go, "Well, that's, that's propaganda." That is a material from outside the school system used for propaganda purposes. Is that for those textbooks? I mean, I just don't see the relation, I don't see the connection between that paragraph and advertising. And I don't know if I'm missing something here. I mean, I get that it says advertising, but then it goes on to list things that we don't accept, and propaganda is not one of the things we don't accept, so.
Board member Perleberg?
Yeah, I'm sorry, again, it, it sounds much worse than I actually feel, but, to board member Beckham's point, the things that we do have up on our buses, or on our fences, or handed out at our advertisements, and I never read this as prohibiting that. What it does, though, to me, is make sure that the district can not have certain advertisements. Just because someone buys some space from us, they get to put up whatever they want, saying, you know, something either towards their belief, or propaganda, or even in the idea of selling something, but in that, they are pushing forth an agenda, or an idea, but saying, but calling it an advertisement. I think that's why it's very appropriate here. It's a necessary safety net that our district should have, because of course, we want to have full control over what's on our campuses, and what our families see, so I see this as all, having the ability to approve exactly what makes us comfortable, and all, like all the things we already see, but also having a way to say, "No, this is not purpose, and our families, some of our families could be offended by this advertisement." I think it's in the right place.
Board member Kravitz, can I, do you?
Oh, yeah, I just have a, well, I guess common question. Where it says, "Advertising on district vehicles," couldn't that encompass just advertising in the district, because your bullet point on the second page, "Advertising shall not reference or be related to political figures, elections, or issues. Advertisements that refer to religious affiliation, figure, or event shall not be authorized." So in some ways, to me, it seems redundant and repetitive of what is in that first paragraph and covers that issue, and I just thought of that, so I'm sorry. I was looking at other issues with regard to today's meeting, so I didn't, that's just kind of...
I guess I'm a little bit confused about what you're saying, because you started with advertising on vehicles.
I'm saying that the advertising on district vehicles, the bullet points under that, do they not relate to advertising in the district in general, and why just keep it to district vehicles?
That's correct. That's...
So instead of just saying, "Advertising on district vehicles," advertising in the district, and take out the word vehicle.
Yeah, I actually think that that might have been an error, because what Amy and I were, Amy Bolton and I were trying to do was make it applicable to all advertisements, and delete the part that's specific to vehicles, so that's a good point. And yes, it's supposed to apply to all advertising, not just...
Right, oh, okay. I mean, because to me, that covers the first paragraph.
Right, okay. I don't know.
Board member Greenberg?
Well, and to board member Kravitz's point, that, that is my point, in part, that we, we list a significant, the statute, what the statute says is, very specifically, "Advertisements shall be age-appropriate and not contain promotion of any substance that is illegal for minors, such as alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, or gambling. And advertisements shall comply with the state sex policy of abstinence." And, you know, that is what the statute says, unless there are other things that are prohibited by law. So what we have done, as a district, is we have gone further than that, and said, "There are things that we don't want to open up as a forum for discussion." You know, we don't want politics on our, we don't want religious, we don't want, you know, vaping, whatever, all those things. We have gone above and beyond that, and we list out, and that kind of brings my second point out, but we list out all these prohibitions, but for some reason, we start this policy discussing propaganda, and I don't, I don't know if that's a catch-all provision, you know, but at the same time, as I've mentioned before, you know, those statements that say the district reserves the right to refuse any advertising or sponsorship that would otherwise be inappropriate with the values, beliefs, core, et cetera, of the superintendent, I would argue, as much as I generally agree with Dr. Kreekard, that this is a policy that is in place for future, for the future, in subsequent leadership, and I, I mean, it seems quite vague or overbroad if we review it and go, we don't, you know, this isn't, it's not political, it's not religious, it's not, it's not about illegal drugs, or anything for minors, or violence, or anything like that, but still, in my gut, I feel it's not appropriate. And I don't know if that's overbroad or over, I mean, I just, I've not spent enough time reviewing the case law on the issue.
So two things about that. One, we are perfectly okay to impose additional, so long as they're not illegal reasons for declining advertisements. So I, there's no legal issue with that. And secondly, it is impossible to make an exhaustive list of everything that might come to our doorstep as, "Hey, I want to advertise this." And so it's important to have something that says exactly what it says, which is, it's not all-inclusive, it's not exhaustive, and should a superintendent, whether it's Dr. Kreekard or his successor, say, "I want to not advertise this, because I don't like so-and-so," that conversation, you know, at least with his legal counsel, is going to be, you got to have a legitimate reason. What is your reason? If that's it, that's not good enough.
Well, and that, and you, the usual catch-all provisions that I see tend to be, they quote the case law, and they say, "If it's disruptive to the operation of the school district," or "It's otherwise disruptive to the operation of the school district." So, I mean, I know that, that it's just, you know, it was just one of those comments, but I personally, I just, I really don't understand this opening paragraph, and it, I, you know, with, considering the totality of all these, of these prohibitions and the catch-all provisions, I would, again, I would refer back to what board member Kravitz mentioned, that, I mean, we, all that's in there. So it's, I just don't know why we're repeating that, if there's something specific that someone is thinking is, is not covered in this, but they think is propaganda, that are facts used to harm somebody else. I don't know, I don't think I've ever seen facts used, I don't know how else facts can be used, but, you know, that's funny.
Board member Beckham?
And I apologize for probably also making this more difficult, but understanding your point, to me, policy has to be something that when you ask, "What does it mean?", you can clearly state, "This is what it means." So I would like some clarity, since we've asked that question, and it's not completely clear. And I'm wondering if it's not completely clear is because, under what's in parentheses, appears to be defining what a propaganda purpose is. Is that the correct definition of propaganda purpose? And does everybody understand what that purpose is? And I think that several years ago, this wouldn't have been as much of an issue, but things were brought up, climate change. That could be considered propaganda, and you could put something up there that is an opposing, is damage to an opposing cause. I think maybe the word "opposing cause" is what kind of, I kind of go, "Well, what do you mean by that?" So we do have, or is climate change, which is scientific, but it's also political, so is, are you saying climate change would not come under this, come under this paragraph? That someone could say, "Hey, you can't put that up, because it is propaganda. You're promoting something that, you know, a lot of people don't believe in, and it's political." So I just want clarity, is all I'm looking for.
And again, you're not going to have language that's going to address every single issue. Board member Greenberg's example actually was a poster in a teacher's room that talks, you know, National Geographic talks about climate change. That would never even come under this. It's not an advertisement.
No, thank you.
Now, should somebody come and say, "I want to put an advertisement on your, a banner on your school that says, 'Climate change is bunk,' and it has nothing to do with science..."
And I'm promoting a clarification.
Board member Perleberg?
Thank you. Or, and maybe I'll go to an extreme example, but to that point, or someone says, "I want to put up an advertisement for a book that is all about debunking climate change." I think you're going to be happy that's there. I think you're even going to be happy, or especially, and I'm using the extreme to show the example of the range that this can cover, is when someone comes and says, "I want to advertise my book that exalts the history of the KKK," we're all going to be really happy that paragraph is there. And that's my point, this is advertisements.
Is the KKK part of our values, beliefs, or core judgments of our district?
I just don't want the confusion.
I think, I think a book that would exalt the KKK is contrary to our values in the school system.
Yes.
And we'd be glad that was there.
So we would not allow a book, because, because it's propaganda. One contrary to our...
But we have, "The district reserves the right to refuse..." Oh, sorry.
Board member Kravitz?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for making that clarification, and so for Michelle, so that we're looking at this as advertising, not posters that are put up, because I started thinking, okay, well, the ADL has "There's no place for hate" posters, and so that would not fall under, for this rubric. Okay, thank you for this policy.
Sure, if I could...
I just wanted to get some clarity on what board member Greenberg was saying. Are you pointing out that you think because of, and this feels a little to me like it was added on to. I feel like maybe when it was beginning, it was this, and then they kind of added on to this policy, and are you saying that the list is not all-inclusive, this bullet point, is actually somewhat redundant to have this, and then this over here, when you feel like this defines what we're looking at, and takes care of this in the first place? Is that what you're...
Correct, because I, well, that is correct. And I would also say that, you know, advertising, to me, the immediate sense of the term is sale of goods and services, but that isn't actually the dictionary definition of it, it's quite broad. So when it starts off by saying, "Advertising schools, no materials from outside the school system," I mean, that is, that is what is written, "No materials from outside of the school system." So we neither define advertising, and "No materials from outside of the school system used for propaganda purposes" could, could be anything. I mean, it could be textbooks, I assume, "No materials from outside of the school system." That's my only...
Used for propaganda purposes. So it doesn't mean all materials from outside...
Right, but...
...the school system. Only those that are used for propaganda purposes are being...
Right, but I would argue quite, I would argue the opposite.
The title is advertising.
Yeah, but...
Let me ask, because we're seen to be going around in circles. Well, first of all, I'd want to know, what exactly are you asking for? Deletion of this, or the movement of propaganda to this list? But either way, it sounds to me like we need to take this one off and bring back after we've had some correction. Or, or we find, finally, that we're kind of circling the same arguments around, and we just come to a vote and decide where we are.
We can do that, that's fine with me, if, I mean, people are ready to vote, but my, I think, again, we're not really talking, I think, what I'm trying to say is, you said to me that a book exalting the KKK is something that, that is, would be a form of advertising that goes against...
If somebody's advertising that book.
Right, our book, inappropriate with the values, beliefs, core, purpose, and educational mission.
Right.
Those are in our bullet points.
Right, right.
So I would assume that when we review that, we would go, "Wow."
Yeah, so I'm asking, are you asking, then, that that lead paragraph be deleted? Because it's redundant later?
Well, I think it's overbroad and vague, but I do think it's redundant in any event. Yes, that would be, that would be the argument I would make.
Board member Perleberg?
Well, let's go back to board member Beckham's first original example, that is a little more unclear, a little more gray, where we as board, you as administration, may feel climate change is very much a part of our values, but you have to think long and hard about, depending on the material, that someone wants to come advertise a book that maybe debunks it. Are you then going to make that judgment call, or administration, you know, make that judgment call, so that it fits underneath this, and say, "Okay, sorry, parent, sorry, you know, we understand whatever you wrote, or whoever you wrote this book, it goes against my beliefs, our ideas, and we're going to do that," and you don't have that initial kind of big umbrella to work under?
Got it, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's putting a lot on the line, you know, in my opinion, a lot of pressure on our administration.
Board member Beckham?
What happens if we added, can you go back to the first, and said, "Advertising materials"? And named what the materials were? Right. Because it kind of, I mean, no, you're saying, after the word "material." Well, I think we need to, you have titles, but the first part of your paragraph should be stating what your policy is. And so, "Advertising materials," I mean, we're talking about advertising, so maybe inserting that word in there, so it is clear that what we're talking about is advertising materials. We're not talking about a poster in the classroom. I mean, it would define it, and then it, it starts off that whole policy that you're talking about advertising.
So if you're talking about the title of the policy...
Not the title, I'm talking about once you get into the...
She's saying, "No advertising materials," is her...
Insert advertising.
I wouldn't start a paragraph with "no," but, I mean, with a policy with that, I mean, I think that word, that needs to be rewarded, to be honest with you, but...
But- Is this what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Except that you don't want to start a sentence with no. Yeah, well, it sounds kind of like no advertising materials. I mean, but, but it's fine. I'm not opposed to, yeah, the concept. I understand the concept. I just think it could be reworded and a little bit clearer.
Any further comments?
I, I just, I really don't know what propaganda purpose. I mean, I'm personally probably going to still vote against it, and it's, you know, it's fine if it goes in. I just, I really don't understand what propaganda purpose, I mean, how would you, I just don't get that. But no advertising materials from outside the school system used for propaganda purposes, I, how, I mean, how would you, how would you identify the intent of the advertiser?
That's, that's why I get paid the big bucks.
Mind reading. But I'm happy to vote. I mean, I have, yeah.
All right.
Pornography, you know.
So, are we, so if somebody makes a motion, it would be as amended with that, with that one.
With advertising materials.
Yeah, right.
Does that help the first paragraph at all, by even adding that?
Yes.
I mean, legally, does it? Does it better define it? Does it-
I don't have a legal opinion about that. I didn't have a problem with the paragraph the way it was.
Do you have a personal opinion?
I mean, I've never had, practically speaking, any of these issues occur.
Right, right.
But that doesn't mean we shouldn't prepare for things. I just, in my experience, haven't had that be an issue in turning down advertising or agreeing to take advertising. It just hasn't been an issue. So, I don't know that adding advertising to the materials in that paragraph or taking it out altogether really has a legal, much of a legal difference.
My only point-
Board Member Greenberg.
Sorry, apologies. My only point to that would be, if we've, if we've turned down advertising, have we cited those bullet points, or have we cited this propaganda paragraph?
It's umbrella.
Depends on which word fall, word falls. It may be both.
I think the way it was-
It's propaganda and it violates your student wellness policies and practices.
I can't think of a time that somebody tried to pay us to advertise propaganda. The questions I typically get, and I don't get them very often, are, you know, a parent owns a restaurant and it has a bar, or there's a reference to beer, or, you know, that kind of thing is more typical. And I don't get it very often, even with that. But that's all just my practical experience on the day-to-day. It's not about, it, this just doesn't come up that much.
I don't have any problem typically if it's overkill. Where I would have a problem is if we didn't cover enough, but I appreciate Board Member Greenberg's point, because this is an opportunity to refine these and make them current, rather than be reactive to, well, we never had something come up in the past, oh, and now we have, you know?
Right.
So, I do appreciate the conversation, but as long as it's, Board Member Beckham?
I just looked up the definition of propaganda, and I'm wondering if that better defines, if we put that in. Is the point of the context in the parentheses to define propaganda purposes? That is grammatically what it looks like to me. I didn't write that language. So, and I think this, I mean, it is Google, but I assume maybe Webster's. Information especially of a biased or misleading nature, used to promote or publicize a particular political cause or point of view. I think that that better defines what you're looking at than what is up there. We might want to insert- And then you'll have somebody say it's biased. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to argue. No, I know, but I'm just saying, I think that- And I also think it's probably not a good idea to draft much of this from- The dais. The dais. So, maybe we need to- Just as a suggestion, we might table it and then look at things like that.
We don't, I mean, if we can have a vote, and if it-
You can do either.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, there's no reason not to.
I mean, just, just to add that, when you say biased, yes, the interpretation could be, well, but I want you to be biased on my side, not, you know, Webster's. But there to just simply say blanket a further A cause, then you're not administration or legal is not having to make a subjective decision of what's not biased or biased, or what's biased in the good way or biased in the bad way.
Well, it's-
Further than the cause, either way.
Exactly, exactly. And that's, I think, I'm sure whoever did draft this was trying to be as broad as possible for whatever can come up in the future.
Do you want me to write that in here?
Because we have been quite flat-footed where something, in other policies, where something's come up that-
And to react.
Board Member Greenberg.
I, it would be my recommendation that we, that we just have a vote on it.
All for the question.
But my, my, my only point is, if we want to make it that broad, we should just say no advertising unless accepted by administration. I guess, you know, I just don't, that's my only point.
It is important to have some standards in there. Like I said, you know, to be able to point to a policy that says, here are some objective reasons why we will turn down your advertising, and they usually cover things that people come to us with. They're not going to cover everything, but they cover most of it. It is important to be able to point to some standards. So, I wouldn't, I would not advise that you do something like that. And I know you were kind of tongue-in-cheek with that, but-
Right, yeah. Sorry.
Okay, are there any other questions on, should we move to IMG, animals in schools, or the deletion of the other policies?
I don't know.
I think we voted this particular-
It's a single-
Oh, they're not separate.
It's one item, but I did want to just, what I meant to say in the beginning of this item is just to remind people that we brought several policies and regulations to the board for first read on March 7th. I was not here on March 19th, your last regular board meeting. Everything was back on for consent. It was tabled at that time. I am not bringing back to you for second read everything. After some discussion, Dr. Krikard asked Ms. Bolton and I to talk to a group, which we're putting, working on putting together, of principals and teachers to discuss policy GBEAF and also KD. So, I just want to point out that those are not on for your consideration this evening. But we did, based on what feedback we did have, we thought that the ones that are on today would be okay, and it's, you know, it's fine if they're not. But I just wanted people to understand what, what I'm asking you to look at today.
So, are we voting on the advertising materials, so modified, or are we voting as the way you had it?
You can do either. I made the change while we were talking. It sounds like most of you at least would like to see that changed, so I'm, you know, I can only guess until you vote, but-
Okay. I make a motion to approve Action Item 4A, Revisions to Governing Board Policies, KHB, Advertising in Schools as Modified, IMG, Animals in Schools, Deletion of Policy EEAFB, School Best Advertising and its corresponding regulation, EEAFB-R. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one with Board Member Greenberg opposing.
Thank you.
So, moving on to Action Item 4B, Approval of K8 School Avid, Advancement via Individual Determination Program. Is there any discussion on Action Item 4B, K8 School Avid? Dr. Krikard.
Thank you. President Beckman, members of the board, we bring this back to you after having been tabled at our last meeting as well. And the administrator who is heading this program, if approved, or has brought the, the particular item forward after having worked with the schools, is not present due to a celebratory vacation that had been planned before we scheduled this meeting. So, Dr. Hagegat is not here, so I will, I will lead off with an introduction. Dr. Sakos is very familiar with Avid. She is here, and Principal Slover is, is here as well for questions about Copper Ridge and their interest in Avid. I would like to go back to terms of introduction to our core purpose that we have all, was developed and, and has, and has been agreed to in two different reviews, that our core purpose is to ensure all individual learners reach their full potential. So, how do we do that? One of the reasons, one of the ways that we do that is to make sure that every student is prepared for the next grade level or the next phase of their life, be that post-secondary education or whatever it is that they choose. But our purpose is to prepare them for that adult life. And we do that, one of the things that we are proposing and we do that is through Avid. Avid is a program that I've said before is nationally recognized. It was begun as a program for title schools and for students who did not have college in their family history. It has grown to be, to mean more than that, because as we've said before, just because a student does not have college education in their family history, doesn't mean that they aren't ready for college, or even if they do have college in their family history, doesn't mean that they necessarily are ready for the rigors of college. So, Avid is designed to help all students prepare for the rigors of college or the next level, as it, as it may be. How do we do that? So, these are some key things that I have learned from my experience in a, in another district where we had Avid. First of all, there's a great deal of training involved, so that teachers and principals are trained, and the, the site leadership team comes back from training. They help train the students in what to expect and how to follow through. There's a great deal of monitoring that has to take place on the part of the administrators, both district level and at the school level, to make sure that it is being introduced and implemented with fidelity. And then there is accountability. If people are asked to follow these Avid procedures in a consistent manner, then they have to be held accountable for that happening. And, and lastly, our proposal here is, as a result of three schools asking for the program, there is principal empowerment. We are not forcing this on any one of these three schools, nor would we, if this was approved and we later come back and want to increase school involvement, get more schools. We would not force that on, on any school. So, that, I think those are important for how that is done. So, this is a pilot program, so the, the staff at each one of these schools, the staffs at these three schools, and in the case of Copper Ridge, the PTO are on board. They have looked at it, they have asked for it, they agree that this is something that is important for their schools. And that is true at the HOCON staff and the YAVIPI staff as well. Academic achievement is the end goal. There are many different ways for schools to choose to improve the academic achievement of their students. We will use the same metrics, the district metrics, that were approved by the governing board in December, to measure our progress on those academic goals. And judging Avid based on those metrics is part of the process. So, we will look at, how did Copper Ridge do? How did HOCON do? How did YAVIPI do? And included in their evaluations would be through the use of the, of the strategies of the Avid program they've been training. So, Avid itself is not evaluated, but the impact on student achievement, because that is our bottom line. So, with that, I just wanted to lay out some of my beliefs and, and tell you that I was superintendent in, in a neighboring district when the Avid program was introduced, and, and saw it grow, and saw the number of students that were prepared for more rigorous work and college-going, and whether or not their high school had the program or not, were better prepared for the rigors of high school, regardless of which high school they attended and were more successful. We saw academic achievement grow in that district. So, with that, back, back to you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have some comments.
Board Member Kravitz.
Um, I, I want to want to implement Avid, but I have some reservations, because I looked at several schools in neighboring districts that have utilized Avid for many years, and they are, their scores at their schools don't seem to represent movement and improvement, excuse me. So, I'm not there in terms of seeing evidence that Avid organizational tools are helping with academics. I'm talking about at the middle and, and elementary level for the most part. But in our own district, we have seen, without the help of Avid, we've seen Title I school jump from a C to an A in a year, and we've had one Title school that's been and continues to be an excelling school for several years. And the key for me is strong site leadership and accountability of staff, students, and family. What was the key for those schools? Why were they, why are they successful Title I schools? I think that's something to explore and replicate in our schools that we're considering for Avid now. I have to believe that we have experts in our own district that can share their expertise, expertise with our schools and replicate what's going on there.
And that is part of the plan before an other-
And we can, we can, right, but I think we can do that, you know, with, without Avid and, you know, and then my other issues are, what's the next step for HOCON and YAVIPI's Avid students? What's the next step? It's, Avid is primarily about preparing high school students for college, so, you know, how have Tonalea and Carnado been involved in the conversations? The Tonalea principal is working diligently with his staff and families to increase academic rigor, and I believe he's on a successful path. Carnado already has a big task on its plate with CSI and includes several initiatives. And it has an extremely successful JAG program to help with college and career-bound students. So, adding Avid to that school, I, I don't know, you know, in the next year or two, if adding an additional item onto their plate is, is a recipe for success. Then we had gotten some information sent to us, and, and Principal Slover had, had been included in that. Though we have a strong college-bound culture, we cannot stop there if we are to ensure that students not only go to college, but are successful in college. Well, a lot of Copper Ridge students go to Chapparal, and I guess they also go to Desert Mountain. So, do we have any data that's showing that Copper Ridge students aren't as success, as successful at Chapparal or Desert Mountain? What part does high school play in college readiness? Is there a plan? Are we going to be rolling out Avid then at, at the schools that students from Copper Ridge attend? I, I don't, I don't know. We already have IB and AP at Desert Mountain. We have AP and dual enrollment classes and rigor at Chapparal, so I'm trying to figure out all the pieces of the puzzle. Once students leave Copper Ridge, what's the next step? Well, and then if students from Copper Ridge, who are the six-eight students, if they're going on to Chapparal, does that mean Avid will then be introduced to Kokopa? Then there was, there was also another comment in, in our materials. Because there is such a desire for college preparation in our community, we lose students to schools like Basis, Great Hearts, and Notre Dame Prep, because they promote defined systems and structures designed to prepare students for the highest level achievement. I'm not quite sure what they mean by systems. To me, Basis and Great Hearts are brands that connote academic rigor, and that's why they are attractive. they are attractive to parents of certain high-achieving students. We have schools that attract students for the same reason. If our parents believe that their students' academic and social emotional needs are being met, our parents stay with Scottsdale Unified School District. I also have questions about how have parents been involved in the Avid discussion to date? Which department is responsible for Avid implementation, coordination, and follow-through? Who will be SUSD's Avid district coordinator? Is it somebody currently on staff? Is it a new hire? Are there going to be site coordinators? I saw there was a district-level coordinator, but the school we, that Allison and I visited, there were coordinators at the sites, and from reading the Avid materials, they recommend that as well. And I want, who is responsible in whatever department for ensuring that the program is being implemented and that there's follow-through with fidelity? There are also, in materials that I've read, indicates that Avid tutors will be volunteers. Why? Where are the volunteers coming from for these tutors? Tutoring is a critical part of the success of the Avid program. If they're college students, their schedules may not be synced with our schedules, and I don't know, but I feel that if we are, by relying on volunteer, there's a value in paying somebody for the work, and for something that is so critical, I don't want to rely on volunteers. Those are some of the questions that I have about this program going forward.
Well, I'll give a couple of questions, and then I know Dr. Sakos and Ms. Slover. For the district coordination, if it's a district-wide program where every school is involved, then yes, you need to have a district coordinator. To have three schools in it as a pilot program, we have the two assistant superintendents, Dr. Hagigat and Dr. Sakos, who both have experience in Avid and have been trained in Avid, and they would supervise the schools for which they are responsible for. This would be part of their responsibility. They are knowledgeable in Avid, and they are the supervisors. And so, if you have a district supervisor who has the skills and has the ability to perform the functions of a coordinator with, in one case, two schools, three schools, and in another case, one, if you divide Copper Ridge, then I believe we have the bandwidth to do that within those positions.
So, you're saying we're not going to have a dedicated Avid coordinator?
At the district level. Not with only the three schools.
Mr. Gad had projected that in his 1920 budget, but that's kind of optional, we're still discussing.
Okay.
So, that $39,000 is potential.
Yeah, I honestly don't believe.
This budget indicates a .5 Avid district coordinator.
So, there's no, there's no coordinator.
At the school level, at the school level.
So, each, each school will have a .5 coordinator. So, we have to add that 39 into each school.
Okay, so this is a site coordinator.
Yep, you have a Yavapai, HOOCOM, Yavapai.
That's a question I had on the data too regarding the cost, and I mean, since we're all touching on that right now, maybe we can get clarity instead of all of us asking. The chart that we were provided kind of breaks out each school, and it breaks out a total. And on the total page, it says out of M&amp;O will be Copper Ridge for $28,139 for the program, and then it defines the program. And then it says for HOOCOM and Yavapai, each are $17,320. Okay? So, we have $34,000 between those schools for the program and 28 for Copper Ridge. Then it says aside, .5 Avid district coordinator.
And that's what I'm saying, we don't have, we have, we have the site leadership team at each, at each school. And maybe, if you talk a little bit about how the supervision at the school level is, because I may have misspoken to say that there's an Avid coordinator at each school. I don't believe that, further thinking about that, I don't believe that was called for. But we are saying now, we don't need to have the district-wide Avid coordinator for these few schools.
It's my understanding that the .5 district Avid coordinator or Avid coach would be doing a little bit of both, where it would be site-based support in addition, because there are three different sites. So, it's my understanding that that person would be supporting the three different sites at, onsite as opposed to at the district office.
So, you're saying there wouldn't be the $39,000 position at each school? There would be the one that oversaw all three? And that's the way I interpreted it, kind of, but I needed some clarity?
Yes.
So, we just have the one, .5 then for the rollout?
Correct.
And still, that person would report to Dr. Sakos and Dr. Hagigat, and so, the district-wide coordination at this point, the district administrator in charge are those two assistant superintendents.
Okay. Did you?
No, I want you to.
Sure? Okay. And Sandy still has.
Well, I'm just saying, when we visited the school and they, the Avid coordinators there and the person from Avid just was emphatic how important it is to have the right number of coordinators and personnel to ensure that the rollout is as successful as possible, and I'm concerned that we won't have, you know, while we've been, you know, told we're administrative-heavy, I'm concerned we won't have the right administrative support for this program if we don't have site coordinators and a district coordinator, and I understand it's only three schools, but I'm concerned about the success.
And I'm very familiar with what happened in this district with Avid in the past, and when it was taken away, it's because it wasn't being followed with fidelity in all of the schools that had it. There was not accountability for those things, and I'm committed to that. We've been, in every program that we've been involved with since I've been here, that's been an important element. I do not believe that you ever get success from programs that are adopted but not followed with fidelity. They're designed to be done in a certain way, and if you don't do it that way, you're not going to get the results that you think you're getting by purchasing that program and purchasing the training. So, I believe for this pilot program that the two assistant superintendents and the person who shares the three sites as the coordinator will be able to follow through with the monitoring and the accountability of that program being implemented with fidelity.
Board Member Becca.
I'll follow up with those two ideas because I attended the school with Sandy also and sat down with their assistant superintendent, their site coordinator, the principal, several teachers, and the Avid representative from Arizona, and we asked that very specific question. So, I'm going to back up what Board Member Crabbitt said, is that to have fidelity, as I am sure we all want the program to have fidelity, they were pretty adamant about what it needs, what it takes, and it takes more than what is being proposed. And I had mentioned it in an email to Dr. Hagigat, that there were several other things as well that were missing from that budget. The email I got back was that they felt that this would be adequate. I'm also under the impression that that budget is not adequate. I asked for a, the budget, the initial budget. I then asked at the last board meeting that we have a pro forma budget, because we heard at that meeting from Dr. Creakard, from the Avid representative, how important it was and vital, especially with the fidelity, and what you're trying to achieve, and that is the college readiness that you are going to be providing in the middle school elective component and the high school elective component. And I was anticipating that we would see a pro forma that granted, it is a pilot program in this first year, but when you put together a pro forma, and if you're a board, you are having to look at what all those costs are, because you don't want to know just what the costs are that first year, knowing that you have just been told that those other components are vital to having a big success. So, you have to add in those costs. Even if you don't end up keeping with the pilot program, the board should know what those costs are going to be upfront if you're going to be a success, and we did not get that information. It was not felt that it was, I guess, important to put those in there. But from a governing board standpoint of when you're looking at a program and if you want it to be successful and you're being told to be successful, it needs those components, and they needed to be added in so that when you make your decision, you know it's not just a one-year of 20 or 39, 40,000 and what it is the next year, and then if you're going to add in the component of middle school at that complex, and then if you're going to add it into the high school, what that might be. And so, I have, I share Board Member Crabbitt's many questions that she had. I have some of those questions, and I have some additional questions that I can talk about later, but I just wanted to talk about that budget piece and pro forma. I feel that the one that we were given is insufficient in the data that it was provided us.
If the objection comes down to whether or not we have enough administrative support, I'm usually not one to say that we don't need very many administrators. I want it to be efficient, and I want it to be in the right relationship to the number of teachers and not take away from our class sizes in our classrooms, but certainly I would be willing to add to the budget a halftime district-wide Avid coordinator if that's not a huge ask, if that would solve some of the issues. Certainly willing to do that.
Board Member Crabbitt.
I also had a question, because when I was looking at the, I believe this was the budget for Copper Ridge, it shows $39,180 for the year, and then you go down and it shows tutors, and there's a big black box, and somehow the $39,000 goes, jumps down and is reduced to $28,000.
That's the $26,000 for the program plus the district training for 1,200, and if you put those two together, I believe you get 28,300. That 39 is the .5 that was variable.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought that was like the cost for the program, it wasn't clear to me.
Board Member Becca.
I understand and appreciate the willingness to obviously maybe add some things, but I think it's more than just adding one coordinator. There are several items within that budget that I don't think is really quite appropriate at this board meeting to go through unless, but I can. We can go back and talk about some of those other items maybe that could be worked out. We were given some information that I passed along, and the information I got back was a little bit different from the SUSD staff. So, I had to question, the Avid coordinator telling me one thing and the SUSD staff telling me something else. So, I think that there still are a lot of questions that within that budget that we would be voting on, that, you know, we could pick a dollar amount, but there's some variability about where those funds could be spent. And it's not just the budget that I feel has been inadequate. I think that according to Crabbitt's questions, go to that very question. The thing, the items that I had asked for besides the pro forma and on the budget was that each school be looked at separately, and the reason that that is, is because each of those schools is, has different cultures and demographics, especially when looking at the Avid program. The Avid program, as we know, was stated, you know, was, is, really has a target market of students from lower socioeconomic families, first-generation college students. That does not meet the Copper Ridge demographic. So, it was important to have them aside, to understand the problems that they're having, to know what those objectives are, and I still did not feel that I got an adequate answer as to really what are your objectives with this program, how to solve what problems you're having, and that goes to Board Member Crabbitt's questions that she brought up. And so, I just feel that we as a board did not get adequate information to understand what the objectives were, how they're going to be measured. What we were given was just some data points. We were given some, you know, a metric that wasn't really tied to Avid per se, but it was just your CIP, and this is the growth that we're expecting. But what I'm really looking for is that how is Avid program going to help Copper Ridge in achieving those? And I never, we didn't get that answer. And so, that's a missing piece still in my mind, feedback from the schools. What we got when we asked about Ingleside was just some data on how many students in the past used Avid by ethnicity and by grade. That is, that does not give me the feedback that I would be looking for, finding out how did you, was this a successful program? If it wasn't, why wasn't it? Could it have been? I was looking more for a narrative and then context into how that relates to the three schools that we're looking at. This goes to a bigger issue, and I will say, it stems from something I experienced 10 years ago in SUSD. And I, my daughter was in elementary school, and there was a program that was coming up to the board. We had already, the board had already spent $500,000 on the program, and then my daughter got introduced to it at our school, and shouldn't have been introduced to the school because it wasn't, it was a program called Success Maker, if anybody's familiar with it. It's a remedial computer program, and everybody in the student had to do it for a certain amount of time, either, you know, when they had downtime or day, and it wasn't used with fidelity. And the board had another opportunity to vote for this program and for another $500,000. And the program, when I looked at it, there was no plan in place, there was no strategy, there was no feedback from whether the year before it had been successful or not, but this school, the school board at the time still went ahead and voted 5-0 to approve that program. And I was sitting, you know, I came in and made a public comment to please not vote for that program until you know that it has been successful and you can show the evidence and the data and how it is being used, because I know for a fact it wasn't used with fidelity. And I thought to myself, and I didn't at that time think I would be up here, but I said, if a program's going to come to us, as me, as a governing board member, I want to be able to understand the strategic plan, how it's going to be implemented, and that if somebody asks me a question, I can turn around and repeat what I have read, and I haven't been able to do that with the information I've gotten. When I just asked for, Sandy and I, Board Member Crabbitt and I asked for, to go see a non-Title I school, we were really happy. We were able to go to a school on the west side, and they are doing amazing things at this school. And Avid, Avid is a program that they just started this year, and it's a success, and they told us the reasons why it's a success. Unfortunately, it was a Title I school. It wasn't a non-Title I, so we asked for some more information about a non-Title I school. What we got was a chart, no context, no narrative, and a chart that didn't show much data growth at all. So, I, today, I thought, I had it last night, and I thought, because I got it not just yesterday, I think, I looked at it, and I went to go do some research. So, I pulled up the school in Florida and looked at its demographics, looked at, which would be similar to Copper Ridge, and luckily, they are very transparent with their CIP, their equivalent, not one mention of Avid. So, I called the school today to find out about their Avid program. They no longer have Avid at their school. So, we were provided data with a school that doesn't even use Avid any longer. I asked to speak to an assistant principal, which I haven't gotten a phone call back, but I want to ask two questions. You know, was it successful what was there, and why aren't you using it anymore? But to think that our administration did not follow through and just provided this board with a chart and no context and no narrative, and is expecting us to take that information and make a decision to spend over three years, 150,000, which I'm just so disappointed. And so, I have to say that I really didn't want to have this conversation in public, but I tried to have it beforehand, and I, it didn't happen. So, I'm asking this board to please explain to me how you are going to support a program in which we are not given the appropriate information that we need to make a decision. And if you can change my mind, I'll change my mind, but I'm having real difficulty with supporting this right now.
Board Member Perlover.
Well, I don't know if I can do that, but I'm going to read what I've written here because I wasn't sure if I'd have a voice. because I wasn't sure if I'd have a voice and someone else might have to finish it for me, but I'm going to try. So I'll start off by saying I understand everything you're saying and I understand every question that Board Member Kravitz is raising, because I too, like both of you, know the history of SUSD's past. This district has had in the past a very well-deserved reputation of spending money on programs that they may look good on a flyer or on a banner, but in reality, many of them have been at best watered-down versions of what they should be or what they're supposed to be. Or they are at worst a simply ineffective waste of time and dollars that does not improve instruction, increase academic achievement, or drive enrollment. And we all know those are the three main goals that we face. I'm not going to speak for my fellow board members, but I do hope that explains why I am so hesitant and concerned about this decision and have been kind of from the beginning and express those concerns. It is not distrust of our staff. It is not a question of, I think I know better than you guys. We don't, we know that. But it is, for lack of a better term, a little PTSD from the past probably. I know I could ask 100 educators about avid and get 100 different opinions. I know this because I survived spring board as a board member. I think about putting that on a T-shirt sometimes. What I learned is that the opinions reached in this boardroom cannot be the only thing defending our decision-making. Whether this program's bad or good, it can't be the only thing. The true test of whether a program or tool is successful can only be answered by our students. We have to have the courage to determine what our learners know, what they don't know, and if they are reaching their full potential. And we have to have honest leadership prepared to identify where we succeed and where we fail and be ready to have those hard conversations when we need to have them. Our previous board, and these two board members included, fought some very difficult battles to establish our principals as the academic leaders on their campus with the support of their site leadership teams and their wonderful teacher leaders. And Dr. Krieger, you have repeatedly shared your commitment to that direction. I am very grateful for that. I hear it repeated tonight. And I've also heard your support of the important shift that our district is making and has been making towards data-driven instruction and informed decision-making based on metrics and assessment, not just opinions. I know you do not want to take us back to the past. I hear you saying that tonight and I plan on supporting your request for a few reasons, mainly because of the pilot aspect of it. I do know that our district needs some opportunities to prove itself again. And I know that there's simply no way to be able to answer all the questions, although I've heard some very, very valid ones here tonight. And I am just going to put some faith in our educators in this room and in our district that we are going to be different. I do challenge your leadership team, Dr. Krieger, and all of our educators here to prove with the implementation of this program that we are in fact a different SUSD and not on the same path we were six, eight, and you're correct, 10 years ago. So that's how I'm going to support this, by my reservations, but I'm also oddly optimistic in some ways. So I hope this pilot proves successful and I hope we have the courage to say if it's not, or if we simply can't answer all the questions that we need to and just wind it back. I hope we have courage to do that, so that's all I can say.
Board Member Greenberg?
I appreciate Board Member Perler's comments on that as well as my colleagues' questions. As someone who, I volunteer at Yavapai Elementary. My grandfather volunteers at Yavapai Elementary. We have a very good family friend who patrons it, you know, I care a lot, we care a lot about that school and so on, the school is being discussed today. And I am going to support this as I was at the last board meeting. Do I think with all these schools that this is a silver bullet that will fix everything? No. You know, it is very possible that in a year or two, we reflect on this and we decide, you know what, it either wasn't implemented the right way or it was implemented the right way, but it just didn't work out, or you know what, actually, is it as effective as we wanted it to be? No. But is it helping even just a handful of students? Yes. And is that worth the cost? And I know that there are a lot of changes occurring at a number of our schools. Well, that might be occurring at a number of our schools. I know that, you know, we've, we're trying to create this new title-one director who would help mentor and supervise, you know, principals, teachers, and share with them that experience of success that Board Member Kravitz was mentioning. I will, I will say that from my perspective as a board member who has been on here for three months, that there are a lot of pressures on public school districts, especially ours, given the competition, if you will, that exists here. And I would like to see a very, you know, a strong plan, an aggressive plan for improving our schools and attracting students and demonstrating that, you know, although we already know that we are the best, showing, you know, demonstrating that and convincing everyone else of that fact as well. With all of those concerns and everything, I really, you know, there are teachers and parents and everybody who have asked me to support this, who have told me it just won't work. None of them, however, have raised the issue to me that it will harm anybody. We are not asking or being asked to fire all the teachers at these schools and make them reapply for their jobs. We are not, you know, being, this is $100,000, our budget, I just pulled up our budget from last year, but, you know, $150 million in MNO budget, $100,000 of that, we spent $150,000 on architecture services to design a football field that looks personally to me identical to what we had before. Now, I don't know, you know, we can spend all day saying, well, it's not, it's not going to be implemented with fidelity, it's not going to work. Okay, but is it a tool that might work? Yes. Do I have faith in our administrators that it will work? I do. If it doesn't work, that's the whole point. We hold people to account. We end programs, we fire people, we move, you know, we move in new people. We do what we have to do to hold people accountable for their job. And I just don't see how, what is being presented to us, even if it doesn't work. I can't say to myself, well, it's going to harm anybody or it might, you know, there is no benefit whatsoever. And as I say, and I think it's been pointed out, I think, pretty well, you know, the effectiveness, maybe it will be super effective, maybe it will be just minimally effective, maybe it won't be effective at all, but we will learn that over the two years. And these individuals have come to us, put their reputations and said, I am the person accountable and responsible for this program. I am the one bringing it to you and saying, this is what our school needs, this is a tool that our school needs to make it work. It might not. But I just don't see this, we're not being asked to approve something that's going to cost a million dollars and require us to hire, you know, six new people and we have to cancel other programs. This is a $100,000 expense and I just, I don't, I don't see the need to analyze this just incredibly in-depth, given, you know, everything else we've done.
Board Member Beckham?
To answer your question, there will be no harm. These are soft skills that most likely, that as they're described by avid, soft skills that when my children were schooled, were already taught by the teachers, especially at a school like Copper Ridge. So the question is, yes, you are going to be spending a lower amount of money, but when you're asked, can I, we have a social worker at that school that might do more than an avid program, they're going to say, we don't have the money. Or can we have another counselor? We don't have the money. So even though it's a small amount, $100,000 could buy a counselor that could be more effective than the avid program at a school like Copper Ridge. And I agree with you. I don't see any harm and I could go along with it. I support the concept, the program, but what I haven't seen from our administration, I have seen one principal, and thank you for being here and thank you for attending the James W. Rice School when we attended avid, but I have not seen Yavapai, Hoakum. And I don't think it's that they don't want to be up here. I think that the administration, I don't know why they haven't asked them to be up here, or the title-one director, to talk about how it is going to be implemented in those schools. So you're ready to go ahead and say, yes, I'm going to approve this. And we have gotten from the principal at Copper Ridge at least an idea of a leadership team, but we haven't gotten anything from any of the other schools about a plan. And when you start out something without a plan, it has been, it typically doesn't go well. And we have seen that happen as well. So, but, so I understand what you're saying and you're looking at it that way, but when you constantly, and I did approve things in the last two years, and there were not plans and they didn't go well. And what I start, I want to see is, I want to see the school move to that. And I think Dr. Krieger can do it. He has the experience, but he's got to ask his administrators, you've got to step it up. We're going to have to start providing the information the governing board is asking and that other schools already provide their governing boards. They do that. If you go and you look at what they're provided with the program, it's very different from what we're providing. It's not asking too much to have a strategic plan, an inflammation plan, a communication plan, the assistant, the first I heard about having the assistant superintendent, Dr. Sakos and Dr. Havigut being the district coordinator is tonight. That was not in the plan. So we can't just start off, and I respect what you, what you're saying, Dr. Perler, Board Member Perler, but at what point does this governing board finally say, we've given you your, I believe in you too. I believe you're capable of providing us this information. I just don't know why you don't, because you can't walk in here and what is your objective? Is it to increase enrollment? Is avid going to do what it says it's, that it's capable of doing? When you don't know what you're actually going to do when you do it, except for teach some soft skills that the teachers should pretty much already know. It really, in that sense, is a grouping of professional development, the best practices that we're providing additional professional development. Well, if it's really professional development that we need, we can maybe go to our professional development department and use that budget and, you know, give the professional development we need to teach these avid skills. Maybe that's where it comes from. And, you know, the feedback from our educators that have been in this district, we could look at Coronado, Coronado, avid wasn't a mistake, it was doing its job. There were things about, that were working, but we haven't heard one thing about that. We didn't bring one person in from Coronado to say how it was working and why and how that will relate to what we're doing. And I don't believe that if you vote tonight for this program, that that's going to happen. I just have not seen that, that type of proactiveness once the board has said, I'll prove it, but please give me this. I've asked for things after the fact and I haven't received, so I cannot just leave it at that. I'm not opposed to the program.
Board Member Greenberg, I have some questions too.
I mean, on the whole, it's, I will, I will admit that it is, on a number of your points, I personally find it difficult to argue against, against them.
And they're not meant to be argued, they're really putting it out there for the board members to think about as they vote.
No, and I appreciate that. I mean, I-
We can bring it back once the information's gathered and voted on.
No, I, I know, you know, the question for me is even with the information favorable to this, you know, I don't know personally how successful it will be. I mean, we, the students I work with at Yavapai that I get the opportunity to are wonderful students, they're brilliant, they're probably even ahead of where I was at that age, frankly. They're bright, they're hardworking, they're fun to be around. But at the same time, I recognize that at these schools that, you know, you have, you know, title-one is, title-one for a reason. I mean, you have very different walks of life, you have very different personal experiences and family experiences and what's going on. And, you know, I think avid attempts to bridge that, and I understand that there isn't a set plan and there isn't necessarily in that, in the detail that you're explaining, a set plan in place. And I do find it concerning that we were provided evidence on a, I was not aware of that, on a school that no longer uses it. I would question, I mean, I would raise concerns in my own mind of, well, I mean, it might just be that they, the budget changed or whatever, but how do we know? I just, these administrators have not personally, have not come to us and presented anything to me yet as a governing board member or done anything of which I am currently aware that makes me not trust them when they tell me that they've put this plan in place. And the difficulty of that is that there is no verification process, other than what happens in a year when we review the data on this and to see whether it worked. And I, it's just a very difficult, it's very difficult for me because we are looking at it on a micro level. I don't know what's going on at the other schools or what's occurring or what those other plans are, plans of attack, if you will, to target these areas at other schools or, you know, why, you know, whether, I don't know if other principal, were other principals consulted who are at, Tavon, was Margaret Serna consulted in this process as to what she thought? I mean, in these-
So the three principals who were involved were myself, Yavapai, and Hoakum, as people who were interested in bringing avid on.
Right, but I mean-
Were others asked? Was the question, were others asked? Presented to the group?
About their experience?
It came up as discussion in doing just some action research and looking at who might be interested in it. And then the process for Copper Ridge came up so organically in that it was something that really builds on what we already, some strengths we already have and really can help augment those. And so that's where it came up for us. And then in talking with other principals, Yavapai and Hoakum were the other two who expressed interest as well.
But others were talked about, it was talked about in the whole group and discussed and you three principals are the ones that came for it?
Correct.
Well, I mean, did any principals, did anybody mention concern that it isn't, I mean, people in like positions, for example, I mean, I know you're not the principal of Yavapai or Hoakum, but were there people in like situations at other title-one schools or schools similar to yours that said, I don't think that will, that will work or?
No, I haven't heard any concerns within district in talking with other principals that it, that it won't work. In fact, in talking with other principals about the benefits of avid and some of the things that it offers, we all are kind of on the same page that we, and like I said in my statement, that, and this isn't the only reason for doing avid, but we, in our community, we have parents who are college-bound and that doesn't mean necessarily college-ready. And even though we are, we have been successful in our growth and in our achievements since I've been at Copper Ridge, we still want to continue to raise the bar. We want to continue to raise expectations for students and know that when our students leave Copper Ridge, that they are 100% ready for whatever it is that they want to do. And so in our discussion about what avid brings, is that it allows us to continue to raise that bar. And that's something that's a common desire amongst all principals is, in our, in our communities, what can we do to continue to raise the bar and continue to have high expectations? And we certainly wouldn't want to take on a program that doesn't fit with what our community wants and what our school is all about. Copper Ridge is at heart a very collaborative inquiry-based school with strong reading and writing programs, and so avid is a natural fit to help-
writing programs, and so Avid is a natural fit to help get us to the next level where we want to be. And all principals, in our discussions when we're at lunch or have a break and we're talking about how we can do an even better job, we all talk about what's the best way to do that. And in our case, it's, we feel that it's by bringing on the Avid program. So, yes, that is something we talk as principals about frequently, is how can we continue to meet student needs and how can we continue to raise student achievement? So yes, it is something that's very much a part of all discussions that we have as principals.
And I might add to, to your question about other, other principals, what I've heard from some other principals who have been here longer, is kind of a wait-and-see attitude. They have a little bit of the same attitude that has been expressed here by the board to say, we want to know if the administration is really going to support this. If we go full bore with this, is it going to be supported by the administration? They want to see that. And that's why the pilot program will, will be the one that will help convince people to go ahead or not.
So-
Board Member Greenberg.
Sorry, in those, in those discussions then, with the other principals, were there, it sounds situational, based that it's three schools that have chosen to take up this pilot, were there principals who said, I don't think it would work at my school, where the schools are kind of in, to your, in your experience, are in a similar position and a reason as to why they didn't feel, I don't need to know what schools or who, just, you know, is it that, you know, are, you know, those aren't the skills we need to work on? Or is it, you know, we don't think that would work with our culture? What is it that, if you, if you have any knowledge on that, that separated you out from your colleagues?
And, thank you for the question. No, I have not heard from any other principal that they said, you know, I just don't think that would work for us. And again, it really, we're a very, we're all early adopters here. After we did the first site visit for Avid, I had teachers who came back the next day and already were trying some of the things that, that they saw in the site visit, so.
Where did you, where did you go?
So our first visit was at Newell Barney in Queen Creek, which is a middle school, and then we visited James W. Rice in Elhambra.
Can I ask a few questions? I'm reading too. So, I appreciate that you're in a little bit of, the rollout phase is somewhat respectful to the budget and being fiscally responsible because, and correct me if I'm wrong, that coming to this board and asking us to give faith in this program with a huge amount of budget attached to it would be difficult, and the rollout is, you know, ways to ease into this, and then measure and see if there is a successful component to it, and then maybe add on. I didn't tour, so I'm unsure about the things that Board Member Kravitz and Board Member Beckham are bringing up that are maybe not added into this budget, that you're alluding to, that would make this, prohibit this program from being successful if they are not a piece of this? Am I understanding that you think there's more? And so, I appreciate you essentially, and this is what I'm getting from this, saying that this is the minute, minimum budget commitment to start with for this program that could make it successful. Is that plausible?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Now, I have some questions about the enrollment by grade level at Copper Ridge. So as I look at this, your, and I looked at Ingleside's data, and I found it interesting because Copper Ridge seemed to be, when I spoke with the community, the biggest question. So I appreciate you being here, because it is a proven program in Title I schools, it's been around for a while. So I had a lot of questions and I emailed you today about why Copper Ridge? Why not a pre-AP program? Why not a study skills class? Why Copper Ridge? How is Avid a fit? And it was interesting to me to look at kind of the different data, and I did notice that Ingleside, for instance, when they had the program, they had 334 kids on free and reduced lunch program, or qualified for free and reduced lunch. And 47 of those kids were in Avid. But of those 334, 104 kids were, were in the program itself. So only 47 of the children that were free and reduced lunch of the 104 were, I'm not saying this right, of the 104 that qualified for free and reduced, or I'm sorry, 104 that were in the Avid program, 47 were free and reduced. So we actually had more non-Title I kids in Avid at Ingleside than we had Title I. So I'm interested in seeing that because, as I kind of said, or made, was looking at, speaking tonight, I wanted to make that distinction, because I want to be careful. I feel like it's a little bit reckless to make, have conversations about Title I kids, non-Title I kids, who requires a program like this, who doesn't require a program? Because not every Title I child lacks study skills, and not every non-Title I kid has them. And as we spoke tonight about our K5s, for instance, and, you know, good teaching and kind of establishing some of this, I've said it over and over again, I had twins, they were at Kiva, they had some fantastic teaching, it's a great school, and they had a very different experience. I had one that got it, and I had another one that didn't. And so when she was in Mojave, she's, didn't qualify for free and reduced lunch, she should have had all the study skills, but she didn't. And we enrolled her in Avid and it was tremendous for her. So I do want to be careful with that thought process because it benefits a great many kids. So having said that, kind of moving on to the measurement, I also think, and you've said soft skills a lot, and you're correct in that, that the measurement component that people, the go-to for this would always be AZ Merit scores, right? How does this increase AZ Merit? I think this is difficult to wrap your arms around, because while I think you would build the program and implement it with fidelity, and ultimately your goal would be to see increased scores, that's not necessarily the largest measurement. Because my daughter, for instance, the same one I just talked to you about, and I did get permission to talk about her tonight, does very well on tests. She's great. Where she struggles is in those classes that have a lot of homework, a lot of day-to-day organization that's needed, a lot of worksheets, a lot of, you know, all of that stuff. And Avid really provided that foundation for her. So the measurement to me is going to be not just an AZ Merit score, but is going to be kind of those fundamentals, are these kids getting it? When we do binder checks, how are they doing? When, when you look kind of at those Cornell notes, how are we doing? So, it's, it's kind of a lot of things. So when, Board Member Beckham brings up a great point regarding those kind of measurements, what do you, Principal Silver, where, what is the duration that you would define? I know we're, we would review this annually and see, because we have to be fiscally responsible, don't have a lot of money to put into programs if there's questions. We would look at it every year, apparently, but is three years the duration that we would, we would like to see, you think? And, you know, I don't know what maybe the timeframe would be to determine whether something felt successful, looked successful by the measurements of AZ Merit and the other, you know, attributes or, that you're looking for?
Thank you for your question. I, I think that one of the things that I really like about Avid is that it does have a strong accountability piece. And one of the things that I submitted as part of the information was, Avid has a rubric that they use when they go out to assess schools and how, how much fidelity they have to the Avid program. And so, they look at things like, in the four different domains, such as culture, leadership, et cetera, they'll look at, for example, how many teachers are Avid-trained? Is it 40%? Is it 60%? And so you, you get feedback on where exactly you are on some of those things. And so as a school leader, it's really helpful to see a rubric like that so that I can assess on a daily basis, where are we with this? Am I going into classrooms and seeing two-column notes being used? Am I seeing organizational structures being used? And that makes my job a little bit easier, actually, because I know exactly what it is that I'm looking for, and I have a, a system I can use to assess that. And I think, especially in going to our school visit at James W. Rice, there are certain successes that I think you can see year one, and then more that you can see year two, and more year three. So year one, I think you, it's based on what parts you choose to implement and how thoroughly you implement them. But I think you can absolutely start to measure some degree of success even in the first year that you've implemented it. And that might be that 100% of your teachers are using an agenda or a calendar system for students, or-
And so this is what I'm getting at. So if you were looking at year one, what would your definition be? It would be walking in there, using the agenda, how many teachers? And I think you're sending eight to the training, I believe, right?
Depends on what, what, what the dates are and vacation plans and whatnot, but yes, about eight.
Okay, so, so year one would be going in there, looking at, seeing the agenda check. Can you describe that a little bit more?
Yes, and, and what we've talked about with staff and also with our parent community is what would be reasonable year one. And in doing our site visits, talking with Avid personnel, we, we would look primarily at organization as our first main drive for it, because we already have the other components of, some of the other components of WICAR, we have a strong reading program, et cetera. So organization will be one that we would really focus on, in addition to bringing in those note-taking systems. And so what it would, a goal for us would be that every classroom is using these things to some degree. And we felt that was more important than saying two grade levels are using an agenda. We want all grade levels to be using that system to a degree that's developmentally appropriate and that they're ready for. And when we went to James W. Rice, that's basically the same system that they had used. They focused on everything being positive feedback for teachers, because it is something that's new. And they had started also with organization in every single grade level. And so we would have a similar system to that. Because as a parent, if I have a fifth grader and a second grader, I don't want my fifth grader to get these new pieces of Avid while we're figuring everything out, and the second grader not, I want all kids to be exposed to it right away. And so we want to have something that would be applicable in all of our grades, which is why we chose to start with organization.
Okay. So year two, what beyond that would you be looking at?
So year two, let me go back to my plan that I have here. So there are four domains in-
And I got this, thank you. You don't have to go into great-
Okay, so I won't read all of the domains. But for example, let me pick a different one. So if we're looking at one of the domains, that's school-wide system, we have, by year two, the Avid site team uses the site plan as a living document that is discussed at each site team meeting and revised according to data and certification results. So what that would mean is that, at that point, the Avid site team would have enough training and enough work in Avid to be more proficient in using the site plan and regularly revisiting it. So that would be a system that would become stronger. So it would start year one, and then year two would, would grow in its proficiency.
Okay, and then you would move into year three with the added. And all of these then are supposed to work together to help you reach your target of that CAP, that continuous improvement plan, correct?
Yes.
And then that's where that kind of success measurement would be defined?
This is a tool.
Correct. One last question, then I won't. So you have 100% of your sixth grade will have it as an elective. It says right here, 25, and so that's about 75 students?
Correct.
And then 25% will have it in seventh grade and 20% in eighth grade?
Correct. And that's something that has some degree of flexibility. When we went to Newell Barney, we were, they, the way that they organize at the Avid elective for their middle school is that all sixth graders rotate through a semester of Avid. And they do that because then they can see, okay, this student really benefited from Avid, let's make sure they get it in seventh grade. Or a student maybe was a little reluctant about it, but the, the teachers realized that it was benefiting that student, and so they would recruit that student as well. So they use that for two reasons. One, to expose all students to the Avid elective in middle school, but then also to make sure they have the right students selected for the year-long elective in seventh and eighth grade. And so my parent community would, would like, I think, all students to have Avid, at least to some, the elective to some degree. And so that was really an attractive option to us, was to expose all students to it in sixth grade and then continue on in seventh and eighth for, usually it's one section of, of the students would get it for their year-long elective. But if it, there was enough demand, there were enough students who wanted it or who needed it, we can always look at expanding that as, to offer more sections of it. I would never want to say, we'll only offer this section because that's just how we're doing it. I would want to offer enough sections to, that support all of the students that would need it. So we do have some degree of flexibility there.
And so your K5 component is all the teachers then speaking the same language?
Correct.
The consistency-
Yes.
That no matter, this child in third grade and this child over in third, they're all talking Cornell notes, they're all teaching the same kind of study skills?
Correct.
Okay. And then one last piece, the question that I had, and it deals with pre-AP. And when we talked via email, you know, and I said, the question is, a lot of the Copper Ridge kids feed into Chaparral. And, you know, really, do we need a study skills class or Avid at Chaparral? And if it wasn't rolled out to Chaparral, then where do we see the benefit in Copper Ridge? And would you ever consider like a pre-AP program at some point?
That's a great question. And as a former AP teacher myself, I absolutely think Advanced Placement and IB are phenomenal programs for kids. And I, I, as I go back to my teaching days, if I had a student who got into my AP Lang and Comp class as a junior, and that they had been in Avid from K through 8, I would have wept with joy. Because what I saw happen was students who are incredibly bright, incredibly capable, who are hit with the workload of, you have to write a thousand-word essay every week. And it's a shame when you see students who you know can do that, but don't have the, the executive function skills to make that happen. And so I am 100% convinced that it will help students when they get to high school. It would be wonderful if they, if they could continue to have Avid at the high school level, but I'm confident that having it in kindergarten through eighth grade will be of so much value to them that it will still impact their high school career positively. And I could talk about AP all day, because it was my favorite class ever to teach, but that, the other thing about Avid that's wonderful is that it encourages kids to take highly rigorous classes. We already offer an honors program, but if the pre-AP program were to be open to middle school, then absolutely that would be something we would consider. But we want, we wanted something that wasn't just middle school, but that was K8, because we are a pre-K through 8 school, and we want something that will reach 100% of our students. And we are always open to additional programs that will continue to raise the level of expectations for students.
Thank you so much. And I wanted to say thank you for everyone that came tonight, because like my fellow board members have pointed out, when I've spoken with other community members, parents and teachers and principals about this, the universal theme was, if you don't have buy-in from your principal, from your teachers, and from that community, this will not be successful. So while as a board member, I, I'm not an educator, so when I get my questions answered, I have to trust that you will, you are asking for something that you are going to get buy-in for, and that you are going to implement with fidelity, and, you know, entrust in that, like them. So I thank you for providing those answers for me and for everyone coming out tonight. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. When your daughters were at Mojave, was it still the Avid program, or was it a career, college and career program?
It was the program. Board Member Beckham?
Can I, can I follow up with one question, and maybe Dr. Sackos knows this, because it was mentioned, I think. So it was, I had the opportunity to visit Tavon, and I know that they actually implemented and had, one of the reasons they went from a C to an A was because they implemented binders, soft skills, study skills, without the Avid program. So I am really curious how Margaret Cerna is, and just now the Title I Director, feels about the Avid program.
Board Member Beckham, I have not spoken to Margaret Cerna directly regarding the recent conversations on the implementation of Avid at these schools. But what I can tell you is, is when we did implement Avid several years back, it did begin with the Ingleside and Arcadia, and Tavon was one of the schools that was exploring going to the elementary level. And then we sit, you know, then we moved away from it, and which I was very disappointed to see. So I have not had, you know, direct conversations with her about, with her about that. But what I can tell you is, is, and I've had lots of thoughts as, as you guys have been talking tonight, the, the ultimate measurement of effectiveness is post-secondary success. And when you start peeling that back, when, how do you, we get our kids to be post-secondary ready? We look at the rigorous courses that they're ready to take, those AP courses. And when you take that back a little bit, you look at what are those, the skills, those critical thinking skills, their writing skills, that they need to get there? And when you peel that back, then you look at what are those soft skills, those executive functioning skills, that are needed to get there? Ironically, and I won't speech myself and tell you, when I was a former Avid coordinator at the high school level, but ironically, I'm now diving into learning a lot more about IB. Because the head of schools, if you will, has to be trained for our, our IB program. And when I went to IB training in January, it was interesting, because what they're really focusing now with IB on the continuum, PYP, NYPD, and then the, the DP within the IB, that really does sound funky, but primary years program, K5, middle years program, six-
sound funky, but primary years program, K-5, middle years program, 612, and then the diploma program is 1112. But what is consistent across all of that is what they call their approaches to learning. And their approaches to learning is all about several of the things that Avid is trying to support. So before this conversation even started, I'm sitting with a group of coordinators and administrators talking about these soft skills that are needing, are needed, and how important it is to teach these soft skills explicitly. So when you're talking about communication, self-management, which is the organization, all of these different things, it was interesting really to hear from a group of individuals who have been working in the IB program, how important those soft skills were to teach explicitly. And how the earlier you do it, which is why they're really now going back to primary years program, to look at how can we get our kids to learn these skills, whether it's self-management, organization, communication, so that they get themselves in a position where they go into middle school and then they go into high school ready to engage in those critical dialogues, that critical thinking, and they feel adequate and prepared enough to go into those AP courses. Because we know that post-secondary success is based on that readiness, which is being exposed to those AP courses. And we know that we want to push our kids. And we can't do that unless they have a combination of all these other things and that they're ready to do it. Being a former, you know, Avid teacher and coordinator, I try to impose some of these things with my kids because they're not in schools where there's an Avid school. But I think to, the Slovers' point is that regardless of the trajectory of our kids in our schools that they go, because I think about, okay, these Copper Ridge kids, K-8, if they go into Desert Mountain to enter into, what is the NYPD in ninth and 10th grade, they're going to come with this skill set right here that's needed to explore the opportunity of going into AP courses or going into the IB program. Or if you have kids that go from Copper Ridge to Chaparral, you have students that will have, go with these soft skills and executive functioning skills, which I could tell you, being in support services for the last 10 years, is something that is very challenging with today's teenager. And so to me, you know, it is about principal leadership and being able, that individual and that buy-in with the staff, to understand the impact that this can have on all kids. Because when I started, it was around disadvantaged kids who had average grades, showed college potential, but just needed that push. And it's interesting because most schools that implement it and target those students end up going school-wide because you can't go wrong with everybody coming to school organized. That's one of the approaches to learning, the ATLs in IB, is becoming to class prepared and ready to learn with the supplies you're required to have. So it's interesting. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit excited, but I really started digging back and I started looking at the Arizona State standards. And when you talk about inquiry in the WICAR that goes to Socratic Seminar, Socratic Seminar ties directly to our speaking and learning standards in English Language Arts. And so I'm ready to go back to college and do another dissertation on the interface between all these soft skills, executive functioning. But you're right, this is all about best practices and implementing it with fidelity. And so you've heard me a lot in the past on the board talk about, you know, this having the standard behavioral expectations that we teach kids explicitly so that they are behaving in school, right? This is about, this is a combination. This is teaching them the academic expectations and standards that they need in order to be successful from K-12 and then, of course, which is our ultimate goal. And the last thing I want to say is, and I've been sitting here bottled up, is one of the things I know that we were beginning to look at is the National Clearing House data that we are a party to, which tells us our kids that, so when you talk about measurements of effectiveness, that ultimate measure is looking at that Clearing House data to look at our kids, not that just went to college their freshman year, but successfully completed college. And I think that a lot of our kids that go and have that drive and that desire and that parent support but don't have the skills, a lot of them soft skills and those executive functioning skills, to be able to balance that college life and the rigor that they need to face. So I have always been a proponent of Avid. And I agree that we have to put in those measurements of effectiveness. It's only as good as us progress monitoring along the way. There are so many different measurements that you can look at from elementary to middle to high school. And my last one, high school, you're looking at the number of kids enrolled, not only enrolled in the AP courses, but the number of kids that are getting fours and fives in those AP courses. And that was the data we were looking at when we did have it at our two high schools. And if you go back to that data, you will see that's the College Board data. That was one of the highest shares of Coronado kids taking AP exams and passing those AP exams. Did I answer anybody's question or did I just go on my little soapbox? I apologize.
Board Member Beckham?
I just have a, as I hope it was presented, I am not opposed to Avid and what they're doing at all. As you speak, though, I have to say, as a parent, you know, I'm thinking, well, is it not being, are soft skills not being taught at my school? Are they not being taught at Cocoa Park? Are they not being taught at Cherokee? Are they not being taught at Pima? Are they not being taught at Tonalea? I mean, I have your same enthusiasm, but that, you make me raise a question. I hope.
My answer would be.
I would have expected them to be being taught at Copper Ridge, so I'm surprised they're not, which is why it's so important, I'm not going to labor it, to have, if we have a problem with it, to whoever mentioned it, let's be hon, I think Barbara did, let's be honest, what is the problem? What are we trying to solve here? What are we going to achieve? And if the measurement is, which it sounds like it is, which is what I was kind of expecting, it's going to be through observation. It's not that we have 60% of our teachers trained. That's not the, it's that we observe them in the classroom. That's the measurement. And then how those kids are doing in, you know, maybe at their benchmarks or whatnot, that's what I was expecting. I wasn't expecting to get, we're going to see 3% growth in math on our AZ Merits. Soft skills can help you, but to do better and drive your math score to go up 3%, it's going to be that you're doing math. It is going to be doing a soft skill that maybe I'm turning my math homework in. But that's still, even without Avid, that's teacher-driven enforcement and reinforcement, making sure that homework's getting in. So just giving training of an Avid program to a teacher doesn't assure that they are making sure that that homework is being done properly and that that's going to raise the math score. So I just still would love to see, after this is all, this discussion is over and if it's approved, you know, your, each school's objectives, how you're going to measure them each year, when you come back to us at the end of the year and you say, this is the measurement, it's not going to be the Arizona Merit Score increased 3% because that's not going to tell me whether Avid worked or not. I'm going to be happy, but, so I'll just leave it at that.
So if I may, just a couple of things I would like to hit on before they get lost in further discussion. First of all, those things, Lindsay talked about what it is that she would be looking for. And it's in that she was practically reading from the Avid plan.
From the Avid, yeah.
This is the Avid, this is, it's not just Copper Ridge, this is from the Avid.
It's based 100% on the Avid rubric that I custom made for Copper Ridge.
Not just Copper Ridge. This is the Avid. So she's looking for these various things. And I think that's important to point out that we have provided those things. Okay. Now, secondly, I can't go without addressing the issue of what the teachers are doing. We ask the teachers to do a lot. The content itself has grown over the years and what we expect, as well as all of the social, emotional things that they deal with in the classroom and discipline and the other things that have come down the pike. The more we can help them with a standardized training, with tools that have been researched over the years, so that they can be efficient in that, the better we help them manage their time and be able, it's not that these things are not being taught, but without that training and without that program, they're taught in different ways, slightly different tweaks. A fifth-grade student goes to sixth grade and they are faced with six different teachers who have slightly different rules in every class, slightly different procedures in every class that they're used to. Get rid of all of that because everything is standardized, trained, researched, and then followed with fidelity. And it makes, it helps a little bit the teacher's role, as tough as that is, because they know where they are going with it, how to deal with things. They've been trained and then they move on and can teach the content. They're not dealing with all of these changes because the students don't understand, well, this class tells me I have to have this kind of a notebook or put it in the notebook this way or put the heading here or this way. It's all standardized and it helps the teacher. It simplifies things in a well-researched methodology that helps the teacher. With all the things that we ask teachers to do, this is an assist to them, just as really as our curriculum maps are. The content is wide. We've spent all this time developing curriculum maps so they know first nine weeks, I should be covering these standards, next nine weeks these. So it's standardized across so that there's expectations and help to the teachers in a very difficult job.
Thank you for that. That's the first that I've heard of an honest answer of why we are putting it at Copper Ridge. Thank you. Board Member Perleberg?
And I'm going to jump on that because I'm having a few little flashbacks of the past again. And so I respect very much that question of, you know, what problem are we solving at Copper Ridge or what specific problem are we solving at Yavapai and HOCOM that our educators truly believe they need this tool to use. And just to your points, and here's, I think it was kind of buried in my earlier message too, is we can't go back to the past where principals, the academic leaders of our campuses and their teaching staffs and their teacher leaders don't have a problem. And our district comes to them and says, guess what? We want you to do this other program this other school is doing because it works over here. And because when you brought up Pima, it kind of made me laugh because when my kids were at Pima, there was strong academic leadership on that campus. And if someone had come to them and my, and our students were taught those skills, it was embedded in the education. And I don't judge or, you know, look down on some other schools who say, we need more, we need more structure, we need. But if it's already in that school and their assessments and their academics do show we are being successful, you can't force that principal to say, forget what you're doing and do this instead.
Absolutely.
Please let's never go back to that, ever, ever, ever so. I'm glad that red flag is raised.
I've said in many settings, the majority of my career was spent at the school. I happened to be at the end of my career in a couple of district office positions. But my viewpoint is school-level viewpoint. I was a strong advocate of, as a principal, of site-based management because I wanted to manage that school that I was being held responsible for. I didn't want someone else to manage it from up above. So what teachers do on a daily basis, what principals do on a daily basis, is the core of what we do in education. And that has to be not only respected, but also assessed to the point that we know who's doing a good job and who is not, so we know where to focus our efforts. And that's.
And that's what I'll add.
And to have principals say, I have a group of kids that are going to be successful if we do nothing and we want to take them to the next level, we're right.
Right. And to that point, I think certainly some of these fellow board members know my passion for strong site leadership. And I think that obviously we would agree, we don't want to force a principal to take something to a program that they don't want. But I also can't sit here tonight and say no to a principal when they say, this is what I do want. So that's one of the reasons that despite my concerns that I share with both of you very much, I can't, I just can't do that because I do believe so strongly in site leadership. But it's got to be proven, it's got to be self-defended, so.
But that speaks to that buy-in we talked about that I've heard so much that if you force someone, they wouldn't have the buy-in. So it wouldn't be successful. So the fact that your community is here and you are here and you are asking for this program, obviously there's buy-in. Okay. Are we ready to make a motion? Do I have a motion for Action Item 4B, the approval of K-8 School Avid Advancement via Individual Determination Program?
So moved.
Board Member Greenberg makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Barbara, Board Member Perleberg seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye, or nay?
All abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay. Motion passes three to two. With Board Member Kravitz opposed and Board Member Beckham abstaining.
It's really three, one and one.
Okay, three, one and one. That was my first big split. Okay. All right. Finally, I make a motion to adjourn our special meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Beckham seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 7:40.
I apologize you had to listen to this all night. That's awful. I am sorry.